Okay, we've called a meeting to order, please rise with the pledge of the flag. Pledge of allegiance, spirit of flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, this is the annual meeting, it's a meeting of the residents that wish to attend. It is not a board meeting. Any resident can make a motion, can support a motion, and everyone will vote. Unfortunately or fortunately, we're very limited to what you can vote on at this meeting that isn't just advisory. The only thing you can vote on basically is the salary of the board members. And we'll get into that when we get on to number one. Or if you have any other concerns, or if someone wants to make a motion on something, we can vote on it, but the results of that vote will be advisory. In the past, to give you an example, there was a few years ago where one of the residents wanted the board to look into township-wide garbage carts. And they did, and they even got a price, but then the residents said, "No, we don't want to do it," so that was the end of that.
Yeah, but he said they don't want to do it in a spectacular fashion, like he said.
And that was fine. So, keeping that in mind, we're going to move on. Does anyone have anything, and this applies to the audience as well, that they would like to put on the agenda? You don't have to put it on because before we close, you can speak on anything, any matter you want under number two. If no one wants to change anything, or add anything, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there any support for that motion?
I'll support it.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the agenda as presented. We're going to need a counter, we have Mr. Eric Greve sitting there by the camera, he'll be our official counter for the evening. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please.
Fourteen. Looks like twelve. Thirteen, counting.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The next. Okay, moving on, the next item is approval of the minutes. In that very same packet, the second page is the minutes. And it tells you what occurred last year. And at this time, we need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to approve the minutes of last year, which is the second page. Any discussion? Anybody see anything they don't think is accurate? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, you got that?
Fourteen, counting.
All those opposed? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, moving on, item one, elected official salary. If you saw the minutes from last year, basically, we're requesting the exact same thing, nobody is requesting a raise. We just need residents, we need motions to approve the resolutions that were passed in January to that effect, that the salary would be the same. The first item, and it's included in your packet, it'd be the third page. That was the resolution 2013-02, that was for me. Would be the same salary as last year, so we would need a motion. Let me get my glasses on here. To approve resolution 2013-02, supervisor's salary of $27,176 per year. And if you're so inclined, we need a motion.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported, any discussion on the matter? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, please.
Fourteen.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is basically the same. To approve resolution 2013-03, which is the clerk's salary. And once again, it's exactly the same as last year. The clerk's salary is $27,176 per year.
Motion to approve resolution 2013-03, to maintain the clerk's salary as the same as it was last year.
I'll support it. Moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Looks like fourteen.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item C, it's almost exactly the same, only in this case, it's the treasurer. And once again, the treasurer is asking for the same salary as last year, $27,176, and that was in the form of resolution 2013-04.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2003-04. Support.
Moved and supported to adopt 2013-04 for the treasurer's salary. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Thirteen.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item, D, resolution 2013-05, is for the trustee, Mr. Goldson. And once again, he's asking the same as last year, which is a salary of $846 a year, and a per diem rate of $82 per each meeting he attends. Well, she asked me if I wanted to, and I did.
Okay, alright.
So, you told me that's what it was, so it should be accurate.
No, that you didn't need to put in there, it's $70.50 per meeting for salary, per diem. Oh, okay, that's what you mean?
I said it's $846 a year, plus $82 per diem for each meeting he attends.
Right.
But that's what it says.
Sorry.
Okay. Anybody make a motion on that yet?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported to approve resolution 2013-05, trustee Goldson's salary, which is exactly the same as last year. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item E, resolution 2013-06, trustee Stevens' salary, once again, it's exactly the same as last year, it's the same as Mr. Goldson's. And it is a salary of $846 per year, and a per diem of $82 for each meeting he attends. And when I say meetings, I mean township board meetings.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2013-06. I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve resolution 2013-06. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Thirteen.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item two, any matter that is concerned any residents. Now, it'd be a great time for you to, if you have any questions, or anything that's concerning you in the way of the township, let us know. Okay.
Remember when Roger did his on this thing, the 911 system?
Yeah.
That was a good one.
Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move up to item three, which is adjournment.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay, we stand adjourned from the annual meeting. And if you look into the next packet, which is the regular board meeting, we will call the meeting to order at 7:10. We're going to wave the pledge of the flag, as we just did it ten minutes ago. Now, in this meeting, only the folks up here can vote. But certainly, if you have any input, you'd sure like to hear it. The next item is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
There's no other additions or amendments I'd like to make, motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, February 5th.
Would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 5, 2013, regular McCaskill Township Board of Trustees.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 5th. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report. Colleen?
We began the month with $130,256.32. We took in receipts of $97,61.6 and we made disbursements in the amount of $29,458.94, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $197,858.44.
Make a motion to support? I mean, a motion.
I'll support that. It's a supportive motion.
Thank you.
Support your support.
Alright, there you go.
We've had a motion to approve the financial report as presented, and that's been submitted. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item is under correspondence. A is the St. Clark County Road Commission. The township board met with the road commission last week. They kind of laid out how much money they're going to give us this year, and it's about $3,000 less than last year. They gave us the price of the chloride, and the price of the limestone, and that was pretty much it. They did give us a list of the bridges in the township, we're aware there are three bad bridges. We're going to fix one this year, one next year, and one in '15. So, every year, the township offers us the option of having a road tour. We did not do it last year, but the inclination appears to be that we will have one this year.
I'd like to road tour.
I know you.
Well, we're going to go this year.
Yeah.
Unless anybody strenuously objects and can talk to other people.
No, not this year.
And I'm always amazed, like, Colleen, especially when Arlene was on the board, how you two knew everybody in the township, even if they had their dog or a cat.
Well, you go to as many church suppers as we do, and meet everybody, and they're all wonderful people.
Okay, does anybody, because you two guys work elsewhere, about time, that's good for you? Can you go on the tour?
Yeah, sure.
Want to shoot for like, 10 o'clock?
That's fine, sure.
April 1st, right? Yeah.
April Fool's Day, I like that.
What day is it?
It's on a Thursday. Thursday.
Tom Cammer is going to be there, this is going to be his last road tour, he's going to retire in July.
Really?
And he's anticipating bringing his replacement along, so he's got a lot to do. So hopefully, that'll be beneficial. Don't know what you'll learn off the tour, depends on the weather. Last year, it was so dry, everything looked great. If you get a wet spring, everything's going to be underwater, and everything will look bad. So...
So, what do we know?
I don't know what to tell you. We do anticipate putting a lot of limestone on the roads this year. Last year, we did the north-south roads. This year, we anticipate putting 500 ton per mile on all the east-west roads, chloriding and ditch mowing. So, hopefully, it'll be a good year, and we can get all those things done. Anybody have any questions about the business of the road commission?
Well, I'd like to ask about Palms Road. Is there any plans to get that kind of fixed up?
Well, they... Huh?
It's a county road.
Yeah, that's up to the county, the township doesn't pay for that. I know they did a piece down the road last year, and to be honest with you, when we met with them, I didn't ask about Palms Road, because we really have no say in it. I know there was talk last year that they kind of planned on doing another mile, maybe. Right now, I know they're going to, they want to do four miles on Reed City Highway. They want to do from Starville back this way, four miles. And they're going to do one mile on Fredmore, west of the freeway. Those are the only two paving in our township that I'm aware of. Bill?
Yes? If you don't mind, I was on the website today for the road commission. They are planning to do a mile and a half of Palms from the overpass south.
To Adair?
It'll probably actually be down to the next road, beyond Adair. They said a mile and a half south from the overpass.
Like the Putty Gut, halfway between up to Lindsay?
And then, they're also doing Palms from Grashit, rebuilding Grashit, or Palms from Big Hand to Grashit. And then, they're going to do a cap on Palms from Grashit north to Rattle Run.
Okay, thank you.
But that's on their website, it was on it today.
Because it wasn't brought up, so I could have asked. But I know they had talked about doing a mile.
Well, it's getting very bad for being a paved road.
Well, but a mile and a half south of the overpass gets them, I know they were talking about the bridge work there, you know, over the river, and the condition of it, so that should come.
The bridge north, that one was just done a couple years back.
Well, yeah, but they were saying something about something, they were concerned about coating it, they were going to do something different.
You mean the bridge crossing the Bell River? Yeah, it was replaced in '87.
That's our bad?
Yeah. Yep.
Really?
But Palms Road, except for the pieces they did last year, it wasn't paved since, they said since '78, when I asked last year. So, if they go a mile and a half south of the freeway, that'll get them probably to 31, past 31 somewhere.
But it's going to be down almost to the next intersection.
Almost the Putty Gut?
Yeah.
He knows more than I do, if you got an internet, if you have internet hookup, look on there. And, but they didn't address it, and I'll be honest, I didn't ask.
Yeah, there's quite a few projects listed for this next summer.
They thought that this year, there would be some reasonable amount of work down in our neck of the woods, but probably then, not for a while. Because then they're going to focus further north. That's what they told you. Okay, good question. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we'll move on, we have no old business, new business. Public hearing, 2013-14 budget. And we'll, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:19. Did you get enough time to look at the budget? Or you want a little bit of time to look? Nothing earth-shattering than different than last year. The millage is, Headley has not changed, the millage is going to stay the same. The general township millage is .77 mils. We have a one mil road millage, and that's the same as last year.
I can remember, the state revenue share was 3/4 of 7/8 of our revenues, now it's about 10,000.
I guess the millage did allow us to do several things last year. It allowed us to pay $50,000 off on our debt for the county drain commission from work on three or four drains, especially the Pelton drain. Because that cost the township $170,000 for our share of Pelton drain. So, currently, it's, last year, we owed 68,000, we paid off 60. So, we currently only owe 8,000 to the drain commission. And as soon as we get into the new fiscal year, I anticipate paying that off. The road millage generated approximately $141,000 to $142,000. We spent 100, we still have to carry over 42. 28 has been earmarked for the new bridge on Lindsay. And we missed one chloride application because of the weather last year, we didn't have to do it, which would have been $12,000, so we would have been even. So this year, we're going to do the bridge there, and we're going to try and get matching money for the one bridge on Hessen Road. And we've already been approved by the federal grant for 2015 for the other bridge on Hessen Road. That'll take care of our three bad bridges. So, we're not paying the interest to the drain commission, which was 5.5%, which is a lot more than we can get in the bank. So, we paid off $60,000. And we would not have done that without the road millage for the other things. Any questions in the budget?
What do you have planned for the building here?
Well, as of right now, there's under, I think, under capital improvement, I left it the same as last year, at $6,000. After the fiscal year ends, and we get the audit, because I believe the audit's going to show that even spending $60,000 and stuff, if you look, there are several large items in there that were way under, so we should have, should be in the black. Then I was going to come to the board and give them, we have three capital outlay projects we could do. And then we'll have costs associated, and some are small, some are medium, some are large, and see what the board wants to do. So, I anticipate that'll probably be in June, something like that.
Last fall, we walked through here, with the whole board, and you guys are all aware of what's going on in here, what's happening. You know, I'm kind of dumbfounded, it was kicked to the wayside. Phil brought it up with some money, I guess I wasn't here at that.
I brought it up in a meeting, and the inclination, or the consensus of the board was to hold off, so we didn't do anything. So, we're going to do it, we're going to address it again. After we did the audits, we have absolutely firm numbers of the end of the fiscal year, which is a month from now. And right now, we've got like, three projects that need to consider. One is the floor in here, which is a couple thousand. One is the parking lot, which is like, 6,000.
This doesn't look like a safety issue to me.
No, and the other is the entrance, which is probably well over 20,000.
Well.
So, then the board can take all that into account, and make their decision.
What is wrong with this floor?
Other than it's, the finish is gone. There's nothing structurally wrong, but you can see, as you get down, you're starting to affect, you're right to get in the wood. Because look over at the side where it's not worn, wow, that was varnished. But to sand it and give it three coats of quality finish is about $2,000.
Also, I bet September, it's going to be worn.
No, I have two prices, two bids.
Yeah?
Yep.
We just tried to do a thousand square foot home, and it was 2,000 to redo the floor.
Well, this is a thousand square feet here.
Oh, is it?
One bid was 2,300, and one was 2,350. But, so later this year, I'll be coming to the board with solid numbers, pretty solid, I mean, I got prices on the entrance last year, a good ballpark figure on that. And we'll see what the frost does with the parking lot, and we'll look at the numbers, and they can make a decision. So, it's not reflected, I left it at 6,000 in the budget, the same it was last year. So, that would cover two out of the three, if they want to go for the other option, then we'll have to see, well, where's that money coming from, can we afford it?
And those are the three projects rolling, is there any, there's no anticipated updating of the electrical systems?
There is, or isn't?
Is there?
Not this time.
I don't know what you have on.
When was the last time the electrical was updated then?
'76?
Well, we had a little bit of work done this past year by the electrician. He was satisfied that everything was safe. Now, if you want to upgrade to more usage and stuff like that, we had problems last year with the meter box, the connections were bad, and every time it got over 85 degrees, our volts was going crazy. It seemed to stabilize a lot after we replaced the meter box. And, yeah, it's an old electrical system, but it's safe and it works.
That's the important part.
So, I don't know what to tell you on that.
Yeah, but we can be, more energy, more energy.
The lights are on, what do you want?
Yeah, right.
No.
Don't keep the floor up.
We also need to upgrade for the efficiency of the energy. We're wasting money spending on electrical and stuff.
How much you pay a month?
For electrical?
I don't know, somewhere between 100 and 200.
Well, that's my deal, so.
Yeah, but we're only open 26 hours a week.
We're only open six hours.
That was another point, I don't want to understand why yours closed Friday, but...
Cost.
Help the cost.
If I wasn't here at the meeting to put an objection, I guess I can't say anything too much about it.
Well, you can say whatever you feel like, but it's all a matter of cost.
Well, and the truth of the matter is, I just wonder if people, you know, if they take off to come to the township, you know, did they know of that?
Well, I'll tell you what, though, if anybody calls and has a problem, we work it out that they can get access to anything they want.
Okay, then great.
Coming in at a different time or different day, I haven't seen in a year, I've only been here a year, I haven't seen anybody ever refuse anything that we offer because of the schedule. If you notice, the other neighboring townships that had five days, like Ira, what are they now? They're four days.
Four days.
Cost. They lay people off, they cut the hours, they cut the days. Well, we're at 26 hours.
Well, you raised the wages last year, so...
What we have?
Well, it said in the...
No, we haven't had a raise in five years.
Well, I thought it said that.
No.
No.
Uh-uh.
We haven't, you know...
We haven't raised our wages in over six years.
Five, six years.
We have two hourly employees, and they're on a fixed schedule where they get, I don't know, 25 or 50 cents a year. One is at the top of the scale, and the other one's very close to it. That would have been the only raise. Nobody else on the board has gotten a raise in years. Okay, anybody else have any questions on the budget? Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions, somebody? Okay, then we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing at 7:28. Is there any discussion?
I have, I do have questions. I have a question, seriously, Benson Royalties.
Yeah.
That's our Comcast?
Comcast franchise fee, and a couple, there's like, $3,000 from, we get something from that right away fund every year.
Yeah, Metro.
I think that was $2,000.
So, but it's primarily all Comcast. That's, I hate to pay those franchise fees, but I don't like that.
I like what we get from it.
I like $40,000 a year, too.
Yeah.
Whose town is that down Palms Road here?
Verizon.
Is that functioning?
Yeah, they said it was. It's only what, two years old, three years old, something like that, because the other tower's full, so they needed a, yeah. The other tower over here was designed for four separate companies, and they kept the engineering and they squeezed down a bit. But if anybody else goes on, even if they could do it structurally, they'd be so low to the ground, they wouldn't get any area. So Verizon put their own up at first point for it. Okay, did we vote on that?
No, we didn't.
Okay, it was moved and supported to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing done, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, standing, motion carried. Okay, the next item, which is pretty much the same, it's the approval of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget, okay? Any, uh, anybody have any questions other than that on the budget? I mean, I left a lot of stuff the same, uh, so there is a little room here and there. This budget here shows if everything, if we spent what we said we spent in here, we'd end up with sixty-five thousand dollars more than we started it. But you never know what the year holds, you get into court cases, that gets very costly. Uh, Lansing might do something with the personal property tax, that accounts for somewhere between eight and ten percent of our money, is the personal property tax. If Lansing does away with it, that's gonna cost us a lot of money. Our SEV is down, so our taxes are gonna be a little bit lower, uh, because everybody's SEV went down because of the market, homes and that aren't selling. This year, the residential is down eight percent. So.
And agricultural?
Agricultural is down, went from thirty-seven hundred an acre, this year's thirty-four hundred an acre. So it went down three hundred dollars.
Have we had a lot of foreclosures?
Yeah, but no, I don't think any more than anybody else, I mean, yeah, there's, I think they're starting to dwindle, though.
And any agricultural selling?
Uh, you know, the border review just met organizationally tonight, and I don't know if any in Casco sold. I didn't ask you, to be honest with you. But something, the assessor plugged into the thing, that's why she dropped it to three hundred dollars, and eighteen, thirty-seven hundred to thirty-four hundred, so.
What level is she as an assessor?
She's a level two, I believe, and she's going, uh, she's in school now for the next level.
And her, she has an assistant?
No. Yeah, Linda.
Oh, well, it said here, assessor assistant.
Well, part of Linda's time.
Ten thousand.
Yeah. Well, that's what, so it has.
Well, people call in every day, she gets, she's very busy, all the banks calling, they wanna know on a parcel, what's owed on it, what's going on, people come in every day, they're transferring property, or they're looking to buy a piece of property, and that, that's part of her job as assistant assessor, because our assessor's only in here one day a week, because that's all we can afford, and she does a very good job. But, uh, that's her job, too, she's a deputy treasurer and assistant assessor, those are her two job duties. Okay, any other questions on the budget?
I'd make a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Casco Township budget.
Supported. Moved and supported to approve the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget as presented. Is there any discussion? Call a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
It's me, it would be none. Item two C, Mr. White, was that the last meeting? And we have a contract with Richmond, or with, uh, yep, it's Richmond Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority to do the ambulance service in our township. It's a three-year contract that's gonna expire at the end of this year, he brought it early. The good part is, it's free, it does not cost Casco Township one penny for the ambulance service, and it is a very good, I think anybody that's dealt with them would agree that they are very good ambulance authority. So even though it's not due till the end of the year, uh, we might as well get it over with, it's not gonna get any better than this, and we won't have to worry about forgetting it. Uh, so this would be a motion, if you look on the last page, to approve the agreement from January first, two thousand fourteen through December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, as outlined in the agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the agreement and contract with Richmond Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority Incorporated in Casco Township. Any discussion?
This is through the sixth, through December thirty, I'm sorry, through December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, then, the old one ends December thirty-first this year, so while he was coming, he brought it along, I looked in the minutes, and it was early in the year, three years ago when it was approved. I don't know, I think it was, I can't remember if it was March or April, but it was early in the year, so.
It depends upon the minute.
So we might as well get it done. Is there any discussion on the motion? Anybody in the audience have any questions on it? Okay, at this point, we'll call for a vote, and I think we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, um, hang on, cut me off for a second. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Patty?
Yes.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item three D, uh, this is a contract with Shelley Baumeister for her services as township assessor. The terms are laid out in here, and it's exactly the same as last year. Uh, we have nineteen, this was last year, I think there's a few more, but she didn't even look it up. It was nineteen hundred and eighty parcels of property in the township, and ten dollars a parcel, so it's a contract for one year for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Like I say, it's exactly the same as we paid her last year.
Shall we do it well?
She does a very good job.
Yes, she does, very good.
She knows her business. So.
I make a motion to accept and approve the township assessor's contract.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the contract for the township assessor, and as I mentioned before, it was for nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the year. Is there any discussion?
And the state is, the state's happy with this?
Oh, she's in constant.
Yeah. Well, we were given back control of our stuff after the state whacked us and said we had to reassess the entire township.
And that was done.
And that was done, and the reassessment complied with all the state, uh, guidelines, and they turned everything back to us. Of course, they sent us a bill, they mandate you do it, cost you seventy-five thousand or whatever it was, and then you gotta pay them seven thousand dollars to tell you that to do it.
It was okay.
And then, as they did many, many communities, and then when they started getting into bigger communities, they said, well, that's okay, we'll quit doing it. So unfortunately, I mean, they did Marine City, they did Old Township, they did a lot of townships. So what are you gonna do? Okay, anybody in the audience have questions, questions about that, about the contract?
Yeah, with that reassessment, what was the percentage differential from what they started out and what they ended up?
Geez, I don't know.
I mean ballpark.
I'd have to, have Linda or Shelley pull it up.
Okay.
How long has Shelley been here?
Uh, well, Lynn Houston did it during the reassessment, and Shelley's been here this, this will be her third year. She does, currently does five townships, so.
I mean, she's really good at what she does, and chartering home everywhere.
Well, and everybody said Paul Vincent did supposedly a great job, but here, if you didn't, um, if the state wasn't happy with the figures, that doesn't mean that he did a good job.
She always not like Paul Vincent.
Well, and not saying anything good or bad about Paul, but what the state did, we did the same thing for twenty years. For nineteen years, the state said that's just fine. The twentieth year, they said that's no good, you gotta reassess the township.
Well, they had rules, they had to follow, and, uh.
Well, you had, you had to create your own map, and for twenty years, all the townships used the county one, and that was fine. And all of a sudden, after nineteen years, they said you can't use the county one, you gotta have your own. And because you don't have your own, you gotta reassess the whole township. Well, should Mr. Vincent have known that? I don't know.
Or should equalization have known that and passed that on to Paul Vincent? Perhaps so, but they didn't either.
And a lot of townships and cities were in the same boat, so, and Mr. Vincent was not their assessor. So I don't know what the deal was, I wasn't involved.
There was another issue, wasn't there? There was another issue about being certified as an assessor.
Well, he was maxed out, because you could go up to a billion dollars under his classification, and he was getting very close at one time, he had a lot of townships.
Wasn't there an issue of him, of his licensure?
Well, when he knew he was done, he was retiring, the last, at the end of the year, he did not renew his license, so there was like three months there that, yeah, he wasn't licensed. He, he could've renewed it.
So, but he couldn't have.
But that was after the fact.
He couldn't certify the role, right?
Well, that wasn't the reason it was reassessed, because he let his license, that was after the fact.
That was an element of the whole problem, it wasn't just a simple problem.
Well, it was because another township was supposed to pay it, they didn't pay it and didn't notify it.
So, but that didn't, that didn't harm us, other than let us straighten everything out a little bit more, but that didn't cause the reassessment.
But if you're not certified, you can't certify the role, correct?
Right, you're right there. Okay, any other questions? Boy, you're pretty quiet out there tonight. Okay, we will call for a vote, and I guess I'd like a roll call vote on this also, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Joe?
Okay, moving on, the next item is payment of the bills, in your packet there somewhere.
I make a motion to Casco Township.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve and pay the bills as indicated. Any discussion? Anybody in the audience have any question on the bills? Hearing done, call for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, Pat, Jess, Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen? Yes.
Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Anybody have anything they wanna touch base on that they haven't, or, yes?
Can I just ask, where does this attorney come from?
Which attorney?
This Doug Tuma?
He's, when you go, when somebody takes, uh, when you go to the border review and you get turned down, you go to the tribunal. If you're commercial, you go to Lansing. If you go to Lansing, you get a lawyer to represent you, and where's he come from? He's in.
Port Yorn.
Curious where he came from, you know, Mount Lemmon?
He's in Port Yorn, his dad's been a lawyer in Port Yorn for about thirty-five years, and his son works for us.
Oh, he does?
Yes, well, for tax tribunal only.
Yeah.
Oh, you hire him for the tax tribunal?
Yeah, that's what the bill is. For the tax, he makes calls and tries to negotiate with the other attorney from the other guy before it goes to a full-blown hearing. In Lansing, it costs a lot of money, because your lawyer has to drive to Lansing. But that's on commercial tribunals. On the other tribunals, the assessor does it. But when they go commercial to Lansing, then the lawyer does it. And that fee on there for Mr. Tuma, and it's not very much, is it?
A hundred and eighty-seven fifty.
Okay, that was for the month, and it's probably on one case, because, you know, lawyers aren't cheap. But, uh, but his dad and him have, they're both in Port Yorn, and his dad's been an attorney there for many years, so. Okay, any other citizen comments?
I have one. The good people at, um, the Odd in Richmond stopped by today and brought a few tickets, if anyone out there is interested in bringing their grandchildren or children or just someone young at heart to see, uh, their presentation of Disney's Beauty and the Beast this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there's a few free tickets here that they would like you to have. And also, the good people at, um, St. James United Church of Christ would like to let this community know that they will have their fifth annual corned beef and cabbage dinner at Perch Point Conservation Club, um, on Sunday, March the seventeenth. And beginning this year, they are dedicating their efforts to honor and remember Pat Bandlow, um, a good lady who passed away in two thousand twelve and was a very important part of their church community. So the doors open at four o'clock at Perch Point at, uh, the seventeenth. Come and enjoy a traditional boiled cabbage dinner. That's all.
Corned beef.
Well, corned beef, unless Wayne and I get there first, and then there won't be any corned beef, just cabbage.
Okay, anybody else have anything? We're glad to see our neighbor who lives just down the road, Mr. Ewald's here.
Back moving.
That's good, he had some problems with a traffic accident, we're glad to see him helping out.
Good decision to pass the EMS.
Oh, very important. Glad about that.
You can tell you they did a good job. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're up to adjournment.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Stay in adjournment. Thank you everyone for coming, uh, we're here every month, come on back.
Yeah.